Okay, folks, I think we're ready to get started. Just need to check with AGP, are we all set to go? Okay. All right, folks, welcome. Today is August 17th, it's Monday. We are located at the Morro Bay Community Center Multipurpose Room, and it is a special meeting of a study session for our water reclamation facility. For the record, we do have a quorum. We have two council members that aren't present but are en route. Because of the high traffic situation that we have where we live, they're running a little bit behind schedule. So, and just in support of that, actually, I just wanted to open the meeting officially and then actually take a short recess to allow them to be here for public comment and then get started. I think this is a pretty important meeting that we're kicking off with, and I didn't want them to miss any of the opening comments from public comment. So with that, just formally an opening of the meeting, and then so I'm just gonna officially break for recess, and I think they're about five minutes out. So if you'll bear with us, we'll get started in about five minutes. So thanks very much. Okay? I think in an effort to have our two other council members here at the start of this, it sounds like one may be a little bit later than expected. Don't know if that has to do with some of the evacuation for the fire up in Questa Grade or not, but there is a situation up there. So we'll just go ahead and get started. This is more of a study session, so not any kind of action items to necessitate council to be here for every single step, although it would be nice. So just for the sake of keeping things going, we'll re-adjourn the meeting and get going, and then I think we'll have Mr. Smuckler that'll be here. And it sounds like Matt Makowetzki, a little bit later than we would have hoped, but he'll be here shortly. So with that, we do have a quorum. We'll get started with this. We're gonna open up for public comment, and then following the presentation, the question-answer period from council and everything, we'll close with public comment. This whole study session might prompt some more questions, so we'll open with a public comment for this, go through the presentation, and then close with public comment. And we have Mr. Smuckler arriving now, so perfect timing. So with that, we'll open up for public comment at this time, and anybody that'd like to speak to the opening part of this meeting, please come forward. You have three minutes, and welcome.
Good evening. Marla Jopityn-Szczesny, North Morro Bay. I'm a little confused, so I'm glad I'm here, get to have a presentation, because the documents that I've been reading look to me like we're planning on doing oxidation ditches and, you know, regular... I was just kind of stunned. I was looking at something, and it was reclamation-ready still. We're still going for reclamation-ready, but I think a lot of people here in the town think that the WRF, Water Reclamation Facility, is what we're planning on doing, and especially the eight-year timeline or whatever. I don't... Can you clarify that?
Certainly. If you're done with your comments...
Okay.
That was the other purpose of having public comment at the end, so...
Okay.
You know, not to get into a debate, which isn't the whole purpose of public comment.
Right.
So, you know, I think we can address your comments.
Okay.
Thank you.
And then also, I'd like to hear about Prop 1 funding, and I think the project that we have, if we design for the Prop 1 funding, it will behoove and benefit the citizens of Morro Bay. Thank you.
Thank you, Marla.
Richard Szczesny, Morro Bay. The only... There's a few comments, a few issues that I have, and I've been personally involved in this process since 2003. And, you know, I've said this before. We... When I was working in the field engineering field, I was trained by the guys that went through the Cuban Missile Crisis, and I have a real issue with this timeline. Okay, we put a guy on a moon in less time than it's taken us to build a sewer plant. And I think that we need to really take... You know, you can discuss a lot all the time, you know, and I know the Coastal Commission wants public outreach and all that, but, you know, you don't go get a consensus in your neighborhood if you need an appendicitis. You gotta go to the experts. And some of the experts are the ones that certify... I know collection workers are the California Water Environment Association, and they've had elected certain plant of the year. This is something that we should kind of be looking at, not only from... Because time is money in these things, but not only from a timeline, but also technology, which it opens up for a lot of funding. And I think that if we keep our eyes on the ball there and get a move on it, I just can't see why this... Why we can't... I've said this for years, why we can't have an operational plant in five years. There's just no reason that... There's no reason that we shouldn't be able to do that. And then the other issue is the latest data for climate change sea level rise, the latest data for the surcharging events that occur in the infrastructure. These things need to be incorporated into our plan. And I think that, you know, we... I just keep saying it, that sense of urgency needs to be there, because if we have any kind of a catastrophic event, and there we... You know, one of the most toxic things to man is the waste that comes out. So just like to keep that in mind. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Linda Merrill. I would like to ask if we could have center depository hard copies when feasible and possible in one place, like maybe at Public Works and the library, if that's possible. Maybe we don't need both locations, because Public Works is certainly open all the time, but it wouldn't have to be fancy, just, you know, a bookcase like in the reading room or someplace like that, because, excuse me, the library has a massive amount of city stuff and county and government stuff, and it's all kind of in one place, and it's... And so if we could have one separate place in Public Works for the wastewater treatment plant stuff, excuse me, documents, I'd really appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for everything you've done.
Thank you, Linda. Anybody else for public comment? Seeing no more, we'll close public comment and bring it back to council. And unless there's any responses from staff to any public comment, we'll just move it to Mr. Nunley for opening.
Okay, is that better?
Yeah.
All right. Okay. I did want to say, I did take notes from public comment, and I'll address these as I go through the presentation, but please flag if there's something that I missed that you want to cover at the end, because I think they're good comments and good questions. I'll do my best to address them. First, to introduce myself, I'm Mike Nunley.
Actually, Mike, let me interrupt. So I'm gonna do that, now that I think about it.
Okay.
So, because I want to. So, and because it is an important, incredibly important step in the process of building this water reclamation facility, and that is, at the last council meeting, the council approved a contract with Mike Nunley Associates to do program management of this project. And there was really two ways to do this. It was either for the city staff to hire as permanent city employees, fully benefited employees, engineers, all that, X number of engineers in order to build this wastewater or this water reclamation facility, because Mr. Livick and Public Works have a full-time job to do on all of the other Public Works things that we are engaged in. So if you think about this project, this project is about 40 times the annual budget of the Public Works Department, not Water and Sewer Fund. But so this is a huge project. We couldn't lump all this on Mr. Livick, and so we either needed to hire additional staff in order to build this project, which is one way that some entities do things like this, or hire on a fantastic consulting team. So after a rigorous process that had the Water Reclamation Facility Citizens Advisory Committee decisively engaged, the city council approved last council meeting to hire Mike Nunley and Associates. You see them sitting at the table here with us, next to us. In my mind, Mike is now essentially the department head for WRF construction. And there are still inherently governmental things that Mr. Livick and I will do, such as validating their expenses and those things that are absolutely inherently governmental. But for those things that are focused on the construction, I'm relying on Mr. Livick and his... I'm sorry, Mr. Nunley and his team, they're essentially the department heads. So we now have an eighth department head. We have a department head for Public Works, for community development, for fire, for police, and now for construction of the water reclamation facility. So that's the role that Mr. Nunley has, even to the point where the mayor and I were having our Monday morning meeting this morning, and he said, hey, I'm gonna... I'll go over and ask Rob a question about that. And I said, no, actually, please ask Mr. Nunley that question, so that Rob can focus on streets and collection and clean water and all those things, and Mr. Nunley and his team. So I want the community to understand that, that it's very important that these guys are fully vetted members of the city staff team now. I will say for a third time that there are inherently governmental things that Mr. Livick and I will ensure happen to protect the government, the taxpayer. But we have confidence in this team, the city council does, the WRF CAC does. And so with that, I'll turn it over to the department head for WRF Construction, Mr. Nunley from Mike Nunley Associates.
Okay. Thank you. I'd also like to introduce the deputy program manager, John Rickenbach with JFR Consulting. And so John and I are gonna kind of bat back and forth as we walk through the presentation. But first, I want to say it's a real pleasure and an honor to get to work with you all on this. We're very excited about it. I've been in the area for about 15 years. I've worked on a number of projects with the city in that time and a lot of the counties or the agencies in the county, and very excited to be part of this. So I appreciate the opportunity. So brief, our agenda, we're gonna give a kind of a brief introduction of the program, talk a little bit about, provide an overview of our schedule, go through some of the tasks and accomplishments that we'll need to hit on the first year, discuss education and outreach, and then have discussion and questions at the end. So everything really comes from the council goals. These are our guiding principles for all the work we do on the program and for all the work that we oversee others do on the program. So the council goals, and these are paraphrased, but first was to produce tertiary disinfected wastewater, designed for cost-effective reuse, allow for onsite composting, designed for energy recovery, designed to treat for contaminants of emerging concern, site designed to allow for other municipal uses or other benefits, and then ensure compatibility with neighboring land uses. So one thing I want to point out is the way we've viewed our role in program management for the water reclamation facility is we see there are all these various efforts going on that we've kind of put here with different little bullets and dots. But with your wastewater collection, recovery and reuse, potable water supply systems, and even flood control, there's a definite tie to everything we're doing in the WRF. And we think it's critical to view this all as one big water supply improvement program in order to best position the city for grants and loans. It makes you a lot more competitive in those pursuits if you can say it's all part of a bigger program, and these are all pieces that are gonna take you one direction. So we see the WRF as being critical for your future water supply portfolio. So this is showing up a little funky, but we have a detailed schedule on the website, and you'll see that under some of the old WRF CAC agendas, and you'll also see that under the main website for the water reclamation facility. And we're gonna be providing an updated version to the Citizens Advisory Committee at the next meeting. But what we're gonna talk about today is kind of the big picture, so the schedule and program overview. So there's been discussion about this all of a sudden becoming an eight-year schedule, and I could see where there's concern with that. So the objective remains the same, and that is, the city's goal is to have a treatment plant up and functioning in five years. In our opinion and our experience, we want to push as far as we can to get the recycled water distribution system and components in place, but we also want you to do two things. We see that getting a new plant up and going is critical, and we also see that getting the recycled water distribution system, getting contracts worked out with recycled water users, identifying locations for, say, injection wells, if we look at groundwater recharge, working through a lot of that might take a little longer. We don't want it to, but we want to best position the city for grants and loans. One question that came up on Proposition 1, there is Proposition 1 money now for recycled water pipelines, which is kind of new. We didn't see that before. So what we want to do with this is we want to optimize this schedule, as we're learning more about grants and loans, to best position the city for whatever's out there. And one quick example I'll give, so in our preliminary planning and permitting, we have ... We'll talk in a few minutes about the master reclamation plan, but I want to kind of talk about that now. We are working on a grant application for that for 50% of that cost. If the city puts up a 50% match, up to $75,000, then the state will award another $75,000 for that study. So we've tried to put the schedules for all these different deliverables to best align with grant and loan opportunities, in terms of construction, design, planning, et cetera. So we have some pretty wide bars, and you can see a lot more detail on the website, but the Phase 1 preliminary planning and permitting, this really extends about two and a half years of the initial work effort. Now, that doesn't mean other things, nothing else starts while that's going on. When we talk about the preliminary planning and permitting, that includes things like or deliverables like the facility master plan that's underway. It includes the sequin and permitting work that John will talk about, and we move into preliminary engineering and procurement, and we're working these together as best we can. So we see beginning the process to put together the qualifications requirements for the alternative delivery construction of the plant, which is, in our opinion, that's the only way you do it in five years. We see that as the procurement phase, and some of that is beginning right at the tail end of the facility master plan while we're still working through some of the planning on the recycled water distribution system. So the goal is do things early that we can do early, things like put qualifications packages together, work out with the city what types of evaluation criteria you might want for alternative delivery, and also work out what the alternative delivery method will be. So those are all things that need to be done. The Phase 1 project design, and again, some of these things run concurrent, we see that being a process of about, you know, right around three years. Project construction really beginning with project design, because our recommendation right now is that you're gonna have, if we look at what we call the Phase 1 facility, which is the bare minimum to quit operating your old plant. And what that is, is new lift station, collection system improvements to tie that lift station into the collection system, a new force main up to the plant, and then a wet weather pipeline and whatever recycled water opportunities we can get lined up early as part of that process. And again, the goal is do as much as we can, as early as we can, but put the city in the optimal position to get grants and loans, plan things out, have contracts in place for that water, and have a great long-term strategy. So it's a balancing act. The Phase 2 that we talk about is the recycled water distribution system, and that's what really extends out past that roughly five-year period. The five years begins when the permit is issued by Regional Water Quality Control Board, the NPDES permit. So, and we see, as you see here, the project construction and design for the new plant, those are an integrated task under what we view as the alternate... Under most of the alternative delivery techniques, is we're looking at combining those, under most of those. The lift station and force main, in our opinion, it made more sense because the design time on those and the construction time on those is not quite as long as the new plant site. Equipment procurement takes a while for treatment systems, treatment plants. If we look at the new lift station and force main, our recommendation was go conventional design bid build on that, because you need to detail that out. You have to get permits from Caltrans. You have to get... You have to work out easements. You have to figure out where the lift station's gonna go and do detailed design on all the pipelines. Our sense was, you don't need the scheduled savings there. Let's try to minimize the design risk to the city, or I guess the construction risk by having the city do that detailed design through an RFP process, but let that part be design bid build. So that's why we've got some construction, some design running concurrently, because we might have... In a nutshell, we have different construction packages for the different parts of the WRF. And then, so that's kind of a quick overview. The major program efforts...
Mike, can I jump in on one point?
Sure.
If you go back one, there is a... One key question, of course, is what are we gonna do with the recycled water? And that, as has been explained for months, that drives what kind of plant we build. And so we need to make that decision on what can be done with the recycled water. There is, as you know, the state is implementing now or starting now to develop the regulations for direct potable reuse, or for some level of reuse that could... That means the reclaimed water could be directly reused after it was cleaned to essentially perfection, could be directly reused. Those regulations are being developed now, and we're sort of in an interesting position where we may want to, and that's as you've already essentially decided or directed, the way we're leaning, is a Phase 1 project to, which is the... To replace the current facility at the new site. And the Phase 2 project is the reclamation piece, is how much cleaner do we make the water so that we can use it for whatever purposes to be determined. There's a... From one perspective, we would love to do both of those phases together, so that the end of five years, we could flip the switch and be cleaning the wastewater and distributing it to the new system, perhaps even straight into our clean water system. But those regulations aren't there yet, so there may be a... We sense there is a longer-term benefit of delaying that Phase 2 a little bit, and that's why we talked about Phase 1 at five years and Phase 2 more at seven years, so that we can get a good feel for what those state regulations are going to be, because what we don't want to do is guess and then get into a design and a construction of something that turns out that we don't have all of the regulations we need. We don't know all of those regulations, and then we find we've built something that doesn't meet the requirements that the state's gonna have and will cost more money in the long run. So it's an interesting position. If we knew what all the state regs were right now, then perhaps we'd be looking... We would be advocating for Phase 1 and Phase 2 simultaneously. But since we don't know, there's a reasonably good argument for delaying that a little bit, so that we... So that when we build the reclamation component, we're building it for the best and highest possible reuse. And I guess the quick... So I'm not the engineer here, and so my quick translation of the reuse possibilities, starting maybe from best possible reuse, is that million gallons of day of reclaimed water is directly reused into our water system. The next possibility, which is close but isn't direct, is that it gets either percolated into the ground or injected into the ground, and we then pull it out of the ground through our wells sometime later, after it's had a chance to seep from one mile up the Morro Valley down, or two miles up the Morro Valley, down to where our wells are. And then the third reuse would be something other than going into our water system, and that would be an agricultural reuse or some other. But if we've got the opportunity to get to the point where we are reusing, reclaiming our water and getting to use most of it for our clean water system, then that is a... That's the highest possible reuse. So that's a little bit on that reuse piece and this interesting situation we're in where we don't know what the regulations say, so we can't build to that right now.
Just a quick comment on that, and I would assume, and I'm sure the community would look for, in that scenario, some form of a cost-benefit analysis overlaid with permitability and the assumption that we can actually implement that plan. At some point, that would be presented to the community and the WRF CAC and the council as well.
Yeah, that's correct. In fact, that will be part of the master reclamation plan, is we're gonna look at those various alternatives, and the best solution could be a combination of several. May not just be one reuse opportunity. There might be a handful that make the most financial sense, address the most concerns, and that rank together. And so we'll talk briefly about that. I've got a little graphic that shows how we see that process working out.
So for the rest of the council, do we want to engage in questions as we go, or do we want to wait towards the end as we kind of started? That's okay, Noah. I just want to make sure we get really just good participation from everybody.
Yeah, I would encourage you to do it as we got it, yeah.
Okay, all right. Are there any other... Since we're kind of going that way.
What I would suggest is, if I may... Great question, Noah, thank you. No, but what I would suggest is, if there's a natural break in Mike's presentation, that then we let him naturally break, look to us, ask questions, and move on. I think it makes sense. If he wants to present this entire slide, then when you're ready to move on to the next slide, give us a chance. If we could do it that way, that's what I would suggest.
That'd be great. Any other comments to that? Kind of stick to that format?
To that process?
Yeah, to that process.
Define a natural break. No, seriously, I don't know what that means.
When you get done with that, this particular...
You know, what we could do is, I could... Yeah, I could just open at the end, say, would you like to discuss anything on the slide?
All right. Great, thanks.
Now, the challenge is, engineers naturally run on, and we tend to do it in a sing-songy voice. So there's no breaks. There's no breaks naturally, so I'll do what I can.
The natural break, the natural break is when I hit him over the head.
That's right.
That's a natural...
It's when the planner pokes you, that's the natural break.
Okay, so we're already there?
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Great, thanks, Mike.
And so I will hold here if there are any other questions on this slide.
Yes.
Sir?
Thank you. Thank you, Noah, for asking that question. Excellent question. What entity of the state is developing the regs for reuse of water that are being developed, as you said, as we speak? What agency?
It's State Water Resources Control Board. And one interesting thing that happened over the last year is the California Department of Public Health took their drinking water group and put it under the State Water Resource Control Board. So that's now under one agency. And one of the advantages that's been discussed is the ability to develop recycled water regulations and manage those in a way that we begin looking at this, looking at all this as one water.
And then maybe one of the comments that was made publicly to clear it up, the difference between WW, you know, wastewater plant and then the water reclamation facility versus wastewater treatment facility, I think that's where the confusion comes in, five years, eight years, and the timing for that. So as you go, if you could, with your acronyms or whatever, be clear on that, that would be helpful.
I'll do that. In fact, the term that you hear me, you're gonna hear me use, is water reclamation facility, WRF, for the new treatment plant, the lift station, the force main up to it, the pipeline to, you know, for wet... the pipeline to, you know, for wet weather disposal or for some immediate way to get rid of that water if we don't have the recycled water delivery system in place. So that's what I call the Phase One facility, is that, is the functional treatment and interim disposal system until the Phase Two facility's fully up and running. And again, the goal is find the highest and best use of the water and begin using it day one, if it's a perfect world.
So a second, translating from engineer into normal. So we are, and this is really trying to make sure that everybody's speaking the same language, because we want to, nobody's trying to hide anything. So we believe that we are building a water reclamation facility over seven to eight years in two phases. The first phase is essentially going to replicate the existing wastewater treatment plant at the new site. That's Phase One, that's the 70 to 75 million dollar Phase One construction. And then the way I think about it is, that's really going to be what we have now, but brand-new and at the new location. Yeah, it didn't say anything, yeah, it's going to produce similarly clean water or similarly treated water, but not, I'm not advocating one technology or another on how it's going to do that. And then the second phase, the way I think about it is, build the big filter that goes on the end of that, and it's far more complicated than that, but that works the reclamation component. And that is where we get into whether that is going to be direct reuse, injected, percolated, agriculture distribution, or a, or some, a combination of all of those things. So it is, it is one project, seven to eight years, that is a water reclamation facility. The first phase is to replicate the, is to replace the existing wastewater treatment plant at the Granchow-Kalinov site. That's about a 70 to 75 million dollar project over five years. And then the second phase is the water reclamation component.
And the five-year council goal was for
A water reclamation facility that meets that tertiary disinfected wastewater?
According to Dave's description, that would be the-
Phase One facility.
Phase One facility, not, Phase One facility duplicating, and I use the word loosely, duplicating what we already have, correct?
Yeah, hopefully a little bit better than what we already have.
Understood.
Higher level of treatment.
Higher level of treatment.
Understood.
Tertiary treatment with disinfection.
And I think calling it the water reclamation facility for the entire project gives a, it's somewhat a matter of semantics, but I think it's more than that. It's a different way of thinking about the water that you're producing there. It's not a wastewater, it's not a waste product. It's a resource that we will end up using there. So I think it's, it really changes the way we think about this, this product, by changing the name of it and thinking water reclamation facility. It's all water. You know, there's, you know, I'll stop there. I was going to talk more about-
Before, before one of us asked, you know, just to stop. Okay, Christine?
Okay, thanks for the clarification. Just to add on to that, and I think this council will probably want to discuss this all the time moving forward, I think that there is, realistically, we need to get out of the old site as soon as we possibly can. So that's the five-year impetus to improve the treatment that we're doing now and to move out of a flood zone with one of our most critical pieces of infrastructure. I think where I see head shakes in the, in the audience tonight, and sentiment that we've heard before at Public Comment, is the idea that perhaps a different technology, a different company, or some other process could get us there more quickly, and to the end game, which would be through the Phase Two. So I think that idea of how we're going to get to Phase Two, and why is it taking seven to eight instead of five, I think we should address that by saying that we will be talking about the technology piece that may get us to a shorter schedule or not. That's coming up in the next month, I believe, we're having discussions about that. Are we going to have discussions about that?
Yeah, we'll, we'll talk about that a little later in the presentation.
And we'll even discuss it here tonight. Okay, great. Okay. So then a more on-the-ground question is this. Lift station in Force Main, that you talked about doing those sort of a little bit through a more conventional process, locations for that? And could you just flesh out very, very briefly where they are now and why that has to happen, and where that's likely to happen?
Sure. And so the, the city, you know, currently, the collection system ends at the city wastewater treatment plant, and there are what we call lift station pumps on-site that take that water, because it comes in very low elevation, because it's picking up as much as it can by gravity coming through town. So, and lifts it up, just what it sounds like, to ground level, so it will run through the treatment processes. So when we move, we've got everything still coming to the same general location. And so part of what's being analyzed in the facility master plan is what makes the most sense to tie in those pipes? Are there some of the, we know there are some capital improvement projects in the sewer master plan to replace some of that, that pipe coming into the plant that's out in the streets. So what they're doing is trying to come up with the best, most cost-effective, most effective combination of collection system improvements, routing the pipes, et cetera, figure out where the lift station goes that makes the most sense, and they're analyzing, they're going to look at several different alternatives for that. So you'll see that coming through the facility master plan. So they're, they're already all over that piece of it. And so really, it's required, because we've got to get everything from that into town up to a considerably higher elevation.
Right, exactly. And then we'll have to make sure we secure whatever new infrastructure is there in the event of that flood that would come in, to ensure that whatever that is will withstand something like that. Okay, great, thanks.
Yep, that's correct.
Matt?
I do have a question. When you talk about Phase One and Phase Two, and knowing, looking at this five years for five, Phase One, seven to eight for Phase Two, you're going to have to, the WRF would have to be engineered in those first five years to accept whatever would come in those next three years. And so that, do you have an estimate about what that would cost to engineer that to accept the next phase?
So what, what will really happen with that next phase is the, the plant is going to be sized to handle future projection of city population, visitors, et cetera. So the plant's already going to be built to treat all that. The question that's going to come out that we need to address in Phase Two is, how much of that water is going to be used where? And so what additional polishing steps? It's like salt removal. How much of that needs to be on the back end of that initial plant, to use an example, for the different uses? Because different water quality end users are going to have, well, different end users are going to have different requirements. If you're growing avocados, you can only have a certain amount of salt. If we're using water for irrigation at the golf course, maybe it's not as sensitive to salt. And so we've got to factor all that into the decision on those polishing steps on the back end. So I'd say that really affects the plant site itself. And then Phase Two includes the design of the pipelines to get to those various locations. And that just takes a while, you know, it takes a while to work out contracts with users. You want to make sure you have long-term contracts. You want to make sure you've worked out those terms and conditions, like, you know, what the water is going to be sold for, what folks are willing to pay for it. And so that all has to be worked through in that process.
Mike, if I could follow up on that, in terms of what you just said, that kind of makes me think, so in terms of doing the master plan for Phase One, the people who are doing that, they're going to start to consider those end users and start to approach those during, those people, those folks during Phase One?
What they'll do is, they're looking at that plant site as, as a box, and they're looking at everything that's going to be required in that, within that plant site for a number of different alternatives, or different reuse goals. And within those alternatives, we've bracketed what we think is the range of likely treatment options. One is 100% groundwater recharge or indirect potable reuse, and that's going to have certain fairly stringent regulatory requirements. Another option that they're going to look at is, is sending water for avocado farmers. And, and so that's another alternative they're looking at. So they're looking at the actual treatment plant processes that are going to be required for that, even if all that doesn't get built during Phase One, if that makes sense.
Thank you.
And Mike, just a couple of questions. I think Noah's got some questions following that. As far as permitting goes, we've talked about phasing, and my question is in regards to what kind of conversations we've had with the Coastal Commission. As an example, if we're talking about, if we are on the path to phase this, and we, through all the program schedule, to which we're going to have conversations even more as we go on tonight, we're committed to that five years of Phase One and then Phase Two as, you know, the filter? How do we, what kind of conversations do we have with Coastal to determine that when we go to permit, that they are in agreement with this plan, and they don't say, you know what, we want you to have full water reclamation in five years? Because I, I think that is kind of important on how we, you, are starting to plan these steps. So maybe you can tell about that.
Well, I'll take a shot at that. And I'm John Rickenbach, Deputy Program Manager. And also, I'd like to thank you all, too, just as Mike did. I've really enjoyed being part of this so far and look forward to a longer-term relationship here. So you're talking about permitting, you know, what I'm hearing overall with all these questions, too, falls under this general heading of outreach. We've got slides, we want to talk about how we want to lay all this out, and I think there's, there's an appropriate way, I think, we can rein in the horses to figure all this out. I think we've got a program under development to get that done. I think it's very important. One of the key components that, one of my jobs, two of my jobs, are to lead that outreach program, and the other is to lead the permitting program, which would include environmental review as well. What you ask is a critical question. When you ask, what do we, what kind of conversation do we have to have with Coastal? Well, that's like a fundamental number-one kind of question.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I, I think the, well, exactly. So when, when there's an arrow up there that says preliminary permitting, I think the first part of permitting is establishing all those conversations, identifying the agencies, Coastal, Regional Board, Fish and Wildlife, Army Corps, you name it. Establish our contacts there and really lay out the questions and get the feedback from them right away that's going to influence our facility's master plan and our reclamation plan. So that's, that's really the very first thing we have to do. And the question you posed was the exact right question. So short answer is yes. That, that's the kind of thing we're going to get going on right away.
So to, to keep going on with that question, I guess, you know, some concerns may be that, you know, we do the work up front, particularly with Coastal Commission, and we get some comfort level or confirmation that the schedule that we're looking at is good for five years, and, and we get to that five-year, or let's say, the actual permitting point, and then it's like, hmm, you know what, we really want to change the way we're looking at this from a five-year Phase One to a five-year Phase One and Two. I know it's hard to nail down agencies to, you know, a commitment and a confirmation, but I know that's, you know, some level of concern, and, you know, I know that's, as you've said, one of the very first steps we have to make, but I just wanted to express that. Don't know if you can respond any further than, than you already have.
Just want to add in, we have received confirmation from Coastal with John's previous effort that talked about the five-year timeframe, the phased approach to water reclamation, and they told us we're on the right track in getting there. Being a regulator sometimes myself, we may have all of our wishes and dreams, and we want things done right away, but there are certain realities of timeline it takes to actually construct things, to finance things and constructing, construct things. And I think they, they will be taking that into consideration. I've seen their board deliberate. They do take in practicalities in their deliberations.
I also wonder, thanks, Rob, I also wonder, to what degree would it make sense whether or not we are, we have written communication with the Coastal Commission staff to actually go to Coastal Commission hearing and to the Coastal Commission Board itself, and basically just inform them on our process, other than just in written form? So, you know, I don't know how proactive that is, or how, you know, if that's necessary, or if that's been done before, but I just want to, just want to make sure that we're asking those types of questions, and what kind of responses you have to that.
Mr. Mayor, I would also add that just today, staff had a conference call with Coastal Commission staff to talk about our process in the D-SAL permitting. And as a part of that process, we explained where we were in the process with the Wharf facility as well. And we talked about how important it was going to be to continue to interface with all of these parallel paths that we're going to be working on. And they're very receptive to that and have been very supportive.
I understand that. I just, from the board level, I think, you know, there, as we understand the difference in, in the boards and staff, just, John, just kind of interested in your comments on that as well.
Well, no, I think it's a great thought, and I think the way, you know, all, all this is going to evolve. But I do think keeping other agencies informed about what we're doing is an important part of that, at the official level. You know, there's one thing to talk to staff, and you may get a buy-in at the staff level, but we need to be able to read the tea leaves at the higher level as well. We get that, I think that's part of what we're thinking about as well.
Okay, great, thanks for that. One more question, as we talk about water reclamation, so as we accelerate through this process, accelerate the timeline for water reclamation, and depending on state regulation to where we get right to the complete reuse of water, at what point do we have to work towards our current state water contract? If we get into complete water reclamation and we're actually adding to our portfolio from the water that we're getting through our WRF, at what point do we start having a conversation about the existing water contract that we have, and then, you know, some cost analysis with kind of producing more than what we can use? Really, we're in, under contract for a certain amount of state water, and now we're in the, in the mode of producing more water. So I just want to hear, you know, some response to that.
One of the goals you've given us this year is to start to explore the state water contract. We have seven and a half years left on it, and, and so we're, we're starting that process. We've got it on our, from the staff level in, after, after Christmas, to start putting more effort at that. We've had some conversations on what that might look like, but we certainly see reclaimed water as being one part of a portfolio that, that could get us completely off of state water, if you wanted to do that, or, or significantly reduce our reliance on state water, or keep what we've got and rely primarily on state water and do other things with reclaimed water and use D-SAL as a backup. So we see, we see starting that process more after Christmas, and that we'll have a little bit of a better feel for what the reclamation possibilities are at that point as well.
Great, thanks. Noah, you have some questions?
Yes, just, just one quick one, and I've actually had a chance to talk with Mr. Leivik about this a couple of times, but we are experiencing a new normal with, with water use in the community, and there are some effects that that has on our collection system and the likelihood of increased reuse on a decentralized scale with gray water systems and so forth. And what we could see happen, and are already seeing happen to a certain extent with the collection system and so forth, and I think it'd be good for people to hear that that would be part of that analysis and understanding, part of the facility's master plan focused on how the collection system could change as our water use evolves within the community. But I would like to hear your comments on that and help confirm that.
Sure. And one of the areas that we've been working with the facility master plan team even this week is projection of future flows and loadings. And so that's an important consideration they're looking at. They'll also keep in mind, as they're looking at different treatment alternatives, that, that the potential for this being the new normal is something they, they need to analyze. And the way treatment plants are typically designed is to be able to function well over a design range. That design range will include water conservation at one end, might include a little less, you know, a little more usage on the other end, a little flex, yeah, exactly. And so that's what they're, they're getting input from us on now. They've asked for the, you know, city's latest water production information, we've shared that with them, so they're, they're definitely looking at that. So, they're, they're definitely looking at that.
John?
Thanks, Mike. Sorry about that. Thanks, Mike, for that answer there. You brought in my mind a very, very important point. And, and the point is this, one of the, the major offsets to costs to the end-line user in the community, which continues to be a question out there, when they hear $100 million divided by the number of end-line users and, you know, you come up with the number, et cetera. But one of the, the greatest offsets is, and correct me if I'm wrong, the resale of this commodity, water, to the various identified customers for water that you're going to identify that are out there. Correct?
We, that is part of the master reclamation plan, is to analyze what the cost might be, what the market might be. The, and this is something that I've heard Rob say several times in meetings. I don't know that it's realistic to expect the end-users to pick up all the cost for your reclamation system. I think it's a, going to be a market decision from a lot of your users. It's, it, to assume that they're going to pick up all the debt service, et cetera, may not, it, it may not happen like that. The way most communities look at recycled water is they invest in it because it's important for them to have it as a community. It's less expensive, expensive than other ways to use or, or if you dispose of, of that water. So, it's something we'll analyze. You'll see more from us on that during the master reclamation plan. But, but it's a market decision for a lot of your end-users unless they're forced to take it for some reason.
Yeah. And I apologize, I probably asked it incorrectly. Instead of what's happening now, basically putting it out into the ocean or, or just basically discharging it, there will be reuse opportunities and the reuse customer, which is not the community. There will be customers out there that hopefully will be paying customers that will be paying for the use of that water or the availability of that water possibly. Does that not feed back into the system and help reduce the over-cost burden to the community customers as a whole?
Yeah. It, and it can, but we won't know until we've seen what the market is. But, but that's true. On one end, it can help. On the other end, you might be able, you know, users might pay for just operation and maintenance costs. But the objective is to try to create some sustainable combination of, you know, city investment in, in these users.
And I think it's worth pointing out too, if one of the end results of reclaimed water is to directly or indirectly augment the city's water supply, which allows the city to eventually get off state water, you'll have some savings in there on state water.
My point, exactly. Exactly. Thank you. Great. Mike, you want to proceed on?
Sure.
Thanks.
So, we, we've identified, and it's, it's hard to simplify this as we've discussed because we have a number of tasks running concurrently. But we see, we've broken it into 11 major program efforts. Program administration runs really the full eight years. It includes project controls and budgeting and developing and maintaining a project schedule, grant and loan pursuits. We see funding capture as being something that's going to be, and then, and then helping the city manage those funds and hang on to them is critical through the whole process. Preliminary planning, the Phase One, preliminary engineering and procurement, Phase One design. There's overlap between many of these tasks. But this is just to give you an idea of the, the different nature of the, of the tasks that we're, we're going to be conducting or leading through the program management effort. And it goes all the way through operation and closeout and assisting with making sure that the systems are operating the way they're, the way they're designed. The first-year efforts, really, we see three of those tasks coming to the forefront. First one's the program administration, so that's setting up the, the various controls for the different consultants and contractors. The, and, and also pursuit of grants and loans. So, we're managing a city consultant that's pursuing those efforts. We're managing the facility master plan. Preliminary planning and the Phase One preliminary engineering and procurement. So, that's to manage the permitting process. John will talk some about the, some of the program administration and planning efforts. But it's, it's, these are the, really the focus areas for the first year. So, John, I'm going to flip it over to you for...
Yeah. This slide right here, more or less, is exactly like the last slide, but only blown up so you see some of the details. And what I want to focus on here are the parts that I'm going to be mostly leading. You know, the, the program administration and tracking, that's going to be ongoing. That's what, that's the, the bones that hold the whole process together. The outreach, I do want to talk separately in, in a couple of slides coming up. But one feature we note here is that there's going to be a website that, that we have up and running that's really going to be a clearinghouse. I think that was one of the other comments, a clearinghouse for documents, for the process, for the schedule, ongoing efforts, almost like a newsletter, information. And I think the free flow of information is just a critical component of this entire process. I'll get into that in a bit. The property negotiations apiece right there and the grants and loans, as Mike talked about. I do want to talk about two of the last bullets in, in a bit of detail because this is the only place in our presentation we do mention them. You know, one thing that goes on in all this is environmental review. And among all the other parallel efforts, we have to get an environmental consultant on board to deal with SEQA and NEPA to evaluate the project, the whole of the project, which of course, we only have a fairly, not vague, but not detailed understanding yet because the details come in the facility's master plan process and the reclamation master plan process, which are being done right now. So, what we need to do is get out in front of that by getting a consultant on board. We're actually going to be interviewing environmental consultants next week. We've already gone through an RFP process, evaluated proposals. We've narrowed it down to a few firms that we will be interviewing and probably by the beginning of September, selecting a consultant and then getting them under a contract. Part of their work is, is the obvious. They've got to do a SEQA-NEPA document. NEPA, because you might have federal funds or federal agencies involved in the permitting downstream. We assume that's going to be part of this. And the other part that they're going to be doing is actually helping guide the facility's master planning process in combination with our team to, it's going to be a very iterative process. We figure out the permitting needs upfront, that's the second to the last bullet here, by working with the various agencies, whether it's Coastal, whether it's Regional Board, whether it's Fish and Wildlife, if, if the county is involved in some fashion. We have to talk with LAFCO. You know, there's a lot of things that are farther down the line, but we want to line them all up so we understand the whole of the process and where the red flags would be and how to knock them down as we go along. What are the constraints? Our environmental consultants got to have a good understanding of that too. Because what they're going to be doing is evaluating all that and ultimately making a lot of recommendations about how to set that up. We see our role as working very closely with the environmental consulting team. We also have certain environmental consultants on the ground right now. We have Kevin Merk Associates who are doing biological work. We have Far Western doing cultural resource work. That we're doing out in front just to be able to make sure that we don't have any real problems on the site or along the way between there and the current plant where infrastructure has to be built. We thought that was important to get way out in front. So, the environmental review consultant is going to be able to benefit from all that information and take it from there. Now, this is all a first-year program. We, we have to get a facility's master plan far enough down the line so that the SEQA-NEPA consultant can actually identify and, and evaluate that. So, that's a big iterative process over the next few months that's going to be happening. The last bullet hits to that. Initiate whatever processes were appropriate in, as we move into the next phase of the project. So, that's an overview of some of those issues that we're going to be going through. You'll have questions, but, but we'll certainly be able to answer them as we go along in, in the, in the presentation. But I'll turn this one back to Mike because there's a whole other side of the first year and that's the engineering side of things.
So, the milestones we see for the first year in these small bullets, but big milestones. First is selection of a delivery method. And so, part of what John will talk about during outreach is we'd like to come back to you with an analysis of different delivery methods, let you review pros and cons from our relatively, it's, it's a lot less passionate coming from us than from an advocate for one way or the other. So, we recommend that we put a, a white paper together and then come present that to you with, with our analysis of the, based on the project needs. The facility master plan within the first year, the master reclamation plan within the first year, and then beginning the alternative delivery procurement, whatever process that might be. So, that's the goal within, within this first year. So, we've got a kind of a schedule overview. We have laid these tasks on top of each other. For the public, you know, we'll make this presentation available to post on the website. It's a little hard to read. The green came out a little funky in the bottom on the screen. But we see some of these tasks, the major point here is some of these tasks begin now and they run through the whole program, things like the program administration and tracking, education and outreach, that's going to go the full, full phase because we're going to need, we want this to be as transparent a process as possible. We want folks to understand what's going on. And we feel like we need to present it a step at a time so folks can follow along and ask questions. And, and that you're in a position where you feel informed enough to make decisions and direct us. Yeah, we can flip over to the next one. So, the master reclamation plan approach. So, this graphic, the, really the purpose of it is just to show, I see this proceeding in probably five stages. We're already underway with some of the initial work that's going to feed into the master reclamation plan. And that includes some initial studies by FUGRO. They're evaluating potential locations for groundwater reclamation. So, they're looking in the Moro Valley, trying to determine if they're based on well records where, where good sites might be located. They've done some field work at the Ranch at Colina site and, and we're waiting for them to put together their first analysis for us. Larry Walker and Associates, who you recall was involved in the effluent disposal and permitting, they're looking at salinity in the collection system and looking at, at ways we can try to bring that down to ultimately lower costs for salinity removal at the back end. So, that's pretty important. The second phase, if we go around the, the outside of the, of the, of the swirly, is a short list of alternatives. So, we want to look at different alternatives for reuse and we've mentioned them. They're, everything's on the table right now. We want to develop what I'm calling hybrids, where we take several of these approaches and put them together and determine what makes the most financial sense, what gives us the, and also what might give us the biggest bang for our buck now, when the facility's up and operating. Then evaluation of those, those different options and then an implementation plan that carries you out all the way through the, the full construction and completion of Phase Two. So, while that's going on, the Phase One facility master plan is going in the background. It's feeding into it. And then we're, the pursuit and capture of grants and loans is also driving a lot of that discussion. So, and it's an iterative process with, with funding and financing where you need to have a project description before you can approach agencies and talk to them. But you also want to put together a project description that has the most interesting and exciting opportunities for those agencies. So, that's where John mentioned some of the outreach. Some of the discussions we're going to have with State Water Resources Control Board and various other funding agencies will, will be around that. You know, which combination of these options are, are the best for the, for the city and for the taxpayers?
Hey, you want to pause here for questions?
Yep.
To my left, any questions? To my left, Matt or Christine? Christine?
Great. I'm glad this will be on the website too. It'd be more helpful for all of us to see it as well. So, when we, just returning to some of the comments I made earlier, so when you're talking about the delivery methods, that's where we're having a meeting coming up. I know we were just kicking around some Saturdays. So, can we just talk about where that fits into what you're just talking about here in this plan so that the public knows they have a chance to come to that meeting? So, they're kind of prepared for that and looking for that announcement from the city.
Yes. And in fact, I'll say the, the end of this slide presentation, we've got a list of workshops and outreach opportunities we see coming up and so we'll, we'll hit those.
Matt? John?
Concurrent with this, I assume there's a cash flow analysis that is continuously being updated so that we know sources of funds, et cetera, et cetera, and that that's routinely being reported and reviewed?
Yes, sir. You know, and, and our plan is we're producing, you know, we're looking at budgets for all the work that's going on related to this and we're tracking those monthly, updating those, including projections. And then we're producing a more formal cash flow projection and analysis on a quarterly basis. So, that's, that's going to keep going through the process. And what we'll do is we'll highlight the areas where we've got better information and a higher comfort level and we'll point out those areas where we're waiting for information to feed into that.
And maybe for David and Rob, how does a WRF-CAC fit into all of this stuff and where and when? And I'm just curious as to how that process will work.
Okay. Mike reminded me, we have a slide on that. But just to take the opportunity, we have moved the WRF-CAC meetings to the first Tuesday of each month. So, we're not bumping up against the day after the council meeting where we're asking WRF-CAC to make a recommendation to City Council that was supposed to have happened the week before that. But, so the WRF-CAC will move to the first Tuesday of each month just prior to the Planning Commission to take advantage of that setup. And we'll be using the WRF-CAC as we be, as we are bringing these decisions, decisions council to get their input and questions and then relaying that information on to City Council.
And I think just to add on to that, I'll be talking about WRF-CAC's role and for that matter, all the different components of outreach over the next couple of slides. It'll probably answer a lot of your questions.
And one other, oh, you're okay? Okay. And then you talked, there's a couple of things I just want to go over. You talked about an eight-year overall plan, so maybe you can talk about that. Basically, we understand what the planning process is and the delivery process is for our WRF and then second phase. Can you talk about why, why we have the eight-year plan? What's going to be taking place after the facility is basically up and running? Can you talk a little bit about that?
Sure. And what I can say is, is the eight-year is, is, right now, it's a projection based on similar projects that we've worked on where we've had a major recycled water distribution system or other major elements. So, as we go through the master reclamation plan, that's really going to help us. When we get to that implementation plan phase or that stage in the process, we're really going to come back to you with a more concrete schedule for that. So, the eight years right now is an educated estimate based on similar systems that we've, or similar programs we've been involved with.
But the, the reason behind, just can you talk a little bit more about, so I, I can understand and maybe the public can understand, the purpose beyond delivering a product and then the continued service that goes into that eight-year time?
Okay, understood. So, so if you have a plant functioning and operating, let's say, in five years, past that operation period, there's, the troubleshooting can run three months, six months or a year afterwards. And that's dialing it in, figuring out the chemical dosages, working through technical issues, initial permitting and, and initial monitoring and providing that support. So, that's, that's related to our contract being eight years is to help the city through that process.
I just think it's, it's, it's helpful to understand that. So, we, as we progress through there, we're kind of asking ourselves, where are we going on this? So, thanks. I just want some clarification on that. Thanks. And then property negotiation and securing the site. I think there's a lot of conversation on, okay, we're, we've got a lot of stuff to do and can we, how do we dial in that very, very, very important step?
I was just, I was just going to say, since there's not a slide upcoming on proper negotiation, but it was two slides ago, let me, let me just update everybody of where we are on that and sort of the, the overall situation. So, the first point, the first critical point, interesting that we, we did this right when Steve McElvein walked out of the room. But, so, so the first point is that the city should not and cannot purchase or commit to purchase any property until the environmental work is done. We would, we would put ourself in line for a significant challenge to the overall project if we indicated that we had decided on a site and a purchase or even a purchase agreement would be a clear indicator of a decision on a site before the environmental work is done. So, we cannot and should not, again, give any firm indication that we have committed to a specific site until that environmental work is done. That said, we are happy to have a willing seller. Rob and I met with, with Steve as recently as a week and a half ago as we, and we are working through a... a memorandum of understanding from that willing seller to frame out the outlines of a potential purchase. So now there's two critical points, two critical points on that to ensure that everybody understands is, one, and Steve understands this, that the willing seller right now understands this very clearly, the city is legally prevented from paying any more than 10% over the appraised value of the land for that property. So if we didn't have a willing seller, but we had a, if we didn't have a willing seller of some integrity, instead we had a willing seller looking to jerk the community around, we, the community, can't get gouged because he could not double the price of the land. We are legally prevented from paying more than 10% of the appraised value. It's likely in the $200,000 to $300,000 range of value for that property. 10% of that is $20,000 to $30,000. So there perhaps is $20,000 to $30,000 of total negotiating room for the purchase of this property, for the possible future purchase of this property, should we determine that this is the right place. So the first point is that we have a willing seller and that we, the first point is we can't purchase or commit to purchase now. We have a willing seller and we are legally prevented, or I should say, we are protected by law from spending more than 10% over the fair market appraised value of that. Since our willing seller has now come back into the room, I'll also note that should, and I say that with thanks, that there's a very good relationship, but should that relationship change somehow, should Steve decide to sell that property to somebody else, should there be some, something that happened in his family or something, the city is in a position to essentially take that property for fair market value so the city could declare eminent domain and go through the process of not having a willing transaction, but having a transaction in which the strong arm of the government said, we are taking that property. So, and I say that because obviously nobody wants that to happen, but it is important as we are committing now millions of dollars toward this, toward investigating this site fully, that should the willing seller turn into an unwilling seller, the city would not lose that investment because if we determine that's the best site, we don't want to do this, we don't think we're going to need to do this, but should we, should it come to that, the government could use eminent domain in order to acquire that property. So we, I believe I've given Rob until the 11th of September to complete the MOU with Mr. McElvein. It'll be fairly broad. It's not going to have a purchase price in there, but it's going to have the outlines of a good framework that describes both of our interest in this. And then we would, it will also describe when we will likely determine, when we will order an appraisal, that will be after the environmental documents are complete, at which point we would get an appraisal and then agree on a final purchase price.
Great. Thanks for that. And just wanted to pick up on Christine's comment about the presentation being available on the website. We did have some comments about hard copies being available and I know you took those notes diligently, so just wanted to remind us to think about the hard copy availability of this presentation as well. And then one final question for me at this point, and John, I think you might have a question, is so at what point in this timeline and in this process will we be able to refine costs and what the rates are going to be for the customers? Because we've, throughout this process, we've said, okay, we are, these are projected costs and as we refine the project, we will refine the costs. And we will, and our estimations at this point are relatively high based on that, just the safeguard and nature of estimating. So can you, can you talk about when we will, on this planning process, we'll be able to narrow it down and as we see the project develop, when we can pretty much determine, okay, here's hard projected costs and projected rates at a more refined level?
Sure. So the first major milestone will be the Facility Master Plan. And so if we're completing that in the January timeframe, then our plan is to take that and convert that over to rate impact. And Rob had already authorized the rate consultant to put a spreadsheet model together so that even before that's done, when we have public meetings and discuss, you know, decisions about different features at the new reclamation site, things like public outreach and other types of facilities that could be located there or other features, that we can look at the impacts of those on rates right away as we're working through that process. Because the public could look at that and say, well, we'd really like to see a, let's say, a community park adjacent to the new site. Well, what would the rate impact of that be? And we could actually analyze that there. And maybe that's not a great example, that might be co-mingling of funds, but just to give you an idea, it could be if the community was interested in a pretty innovative energy recovery system and maybe the payback's a little long on it. Well, what's the rate impact of that? That we can give that instant kind of feedback as we're working through that process and looking at alternatives. So we want to be able to do that along the way, do a major correction in the, kind of the January timeframe with Facility Master Plan. The Master Reclamation Plan towards the third quarter in 2016, we'd be able to give impact input on that. So we're looking at right around a year timeframe, you'll have some pretty major updates for those, for your total rate impact.
Great. And we're fortunate to have such a talented WRFCAC committee that is helping us with a lot of those questions as well.
Yeah, and just to add to that, a couple of things. One, this relates to outreach. A lot of engineers are involved in this soup and it's hard for me to understand them, too. And so the city manager and I are on the same wavelength there. What we want to do is as we present things through the Facility Master Planning Process, they're going to be looking at different options on, we're trying to accomplish these goals and there are a lot of different ways to accomplish these goals. And I envision some sort of flow chart in my head that says, if we go this path, you add this little widget on, it's going to cost this and it's going to, you do go this path and you end up with this kind of process, you end up with this cost. What we'd like to do is translate all those theoretical costs into effects on rate. So if you add this, it adds five more dollars to your rate. You add this, it adds another eight dollars, you know, something like that, so people get it. And so that at the end of the day, when we decide on what's the right Facility Master Plan, people get a sense, this is what it's going to mean conceptually to your rate. So there's no surprise at that point. We're not there yet, but that's conceptually what we're trying, we're going to try to communicate as we go down that path. The other path, I think, or the other thing we need to keep in mind is through the environmental review process, this is a CEQA-NIPA process, and one of the considerations under NIPA is unlike CEQA, you do look at cost issues, you do look at economic issues. So we need to keep, we'll need to report cost issues through the NIPA process as well to the extent we understand them. And that's a consideration and a NIPA evaluation as well. So there's a lot of ways, great questions, and we are well aware of the need to try to refine those and make those understandable to the people out there. That's what we'll do.
And it's just, it's just one of those things that, it's just important for us to get through that, that phase of this process. Noah, you had some questions or John? John?
Thank you. Yeah, just to follow up on that with the Facilities Master Planning Process, we are working to, as we complete that, to keep Kayukas in the loop and there's going to be dual analysis, looking at scaled systems with Kayukas and without, and that'll be presented to them. So the door, as many people know, is still open for Kayukas to join us and we will be presenting that information to them so the community could look at that, compare it to what they're working on, and then ultimately make an informed decision. You're nodding your heads and not surprised.
That's correct. I'm agreeing.
Good. And the other component, when we talk about property acquisition, that's really important and I think probably more of a risk and we're treating it as such, is the potential of some form of an environmental red flag that becomes a fatal flaw of the site. We've spent time and resources to start to analyze that already through our options analysis that both of you were involved with. We did a lot of work there. The environmental process at this point will even take that to the next stage as well as continuing to look at additional alternatives. And that's why, as Mr. Buckingham noted, we can't commit to one because the environmental process is basically making sure that we're doing our due diligence on all the different options and proving that the one that seems to be the most likely is indeed that, if you'd like to confirm that.
Yeah, that's correct. And I think that also underscores one reason why we need the environmental consultant on board now. We need to get there, obviously you can't do everything until we have the Facility Master Plan, but the environmental document's going to be critical for a lot of things. That's one thing. Getting funding is another. Having certain agencies look at your project is another. You know, the permitting process depends to a large degree on having your CEQA-NIPA process done. So we understand that's a critical path item, so that's why we need to work on that sooner than later.
Right, but, thank you. Thank you for that. You know, that's similar in terms of your analysis, the scenario planning. If you might all recall, we did that with our tenure plan in terms of looking at the overall city. And when we had management partners in, they developed a scenario planning tool that was very helpful, very powerful. And so I appreciate the opportunity to be able to go in and change variables and determine cost to rate pair on that. I think that's going to be very helpful, too. The question of eminent domain, what's timeline on that process? My understanding is it's fairly lengthy if one does have to go to that?
I've never actually done it. It's to be avoided.
Yeah, I know.
Almost, I wouldn't say at all costs, but it's to be avoided. It is a very lengthy process. Laws have changed. You used to be able to get an order of immediate possession. That doesn't happen anymore. It's a long court battle that you would go through. Ideally, you would not do that if you had any other options to do. Just want to mention about the rate model. That was a product that was already provided to us under contract with Bartle Wells, our rate consultant, so that was part of their contract. So we had always planned on having that because things will change over the next five years with, both with water and sewer rates, that we may want to plug things into because remember, we set maximum rates. As we change our CIP, we may want to run scenarios where, before the next rate increase would be imposed, to look at those rates.
And my last question is, there was, in my mind, a little bit of confusion at the last council meeting with regard to, on our side, we have Mike as project manager, we have on the city's side, project leader. And I just wanted clarification as to who the project leader is on our side, Rob or Dave?
I am.
Thank you.
And program manager, Mike, I know you said project manager.
Yeah.
They're the program managers that will have various project managers working parts of the overall program.
Because the interface between those two positions is, in my mind, absolutely critical in terms of decision-making process and how quickly it can be done. And I assume the expertise of Mr. Leibig will obviously be considered greatly as you make your determination.
You can consider me your consultant on this.
So at 10:30 tomorrow morning, we have our first bi-weekly meeting with the WRF building team. I'm attending it. So Mike Nunley is hosting the meeting, but I'm there as the executive representative and Rob is coming because most of what happens affects other public works things. So from collections to water to, and also Rob is the, is our governmental, on the governmental side, he's got the engineering expertise to look at the cost requirements in terms of our contractual relationship with Mike Nunley Associates.
And I'll have the role to play. I'll put the official seal on the construction documents as the city engineer.
And I appreciate the process. I want to compliment you on it because I don't know if everybody realizes the importance of that and the leadership being involved at the highest level in terms of decision-making. And so just my compliments to you for that choice. And that doesn't degrade the importance, obviously, of your consultant who is key to the process as well, but the decision-maker obviously needs to be there, so.
Okay, great. Mike?
Okay, yeah. What I'd like to do, we've danced around it a little bit, but we want to talk a little bit about education and outreach. We're starting that today. This really is the first, the first opportunity to really get some feedback and to educate. You know, the goal in outreach is two things. One is to inform and the other is to get feedback. And that's all this whole process, that's all a process is. So there's a lot of components to it that, and we put a lot of effort into our program to make sure this happens correctly. One person you don't see here today, but is part of our team, is Debbie Rudd from RRM Design Group. She was involved in the initial phases in the options reporting process at the very beginning. I thought that was, you know, very successful as far as giving us a lot of feedback that we needed. So she'll be involved in a more formal way over the next few months. But I think, among other things, you know, people might ask the question, well, haven't we already gone through outreach enough? What else is there to say? And I think the answer to that is, it's always, it's like fixing leaky faucets. You have to keep working at the faucet. And the idea is if we don't keep people informed, then people will start not understanding where we're going in the process. So part of it is keeping the information well understood. Part of that isn't formal outreach in the normal way, but the website, ongoing updates through that and so forth. So we're going to use a bunch of different methods in this way. But one of the things we want to do is, again, confirm who are the stakeholders out there that we care about. And this is just really to illustrate how we're going to attack this issue. As we see it, there's really five audiences out there and we list them here. There's the governmental side of things, the council and the WRFCAC. There's the public in general, which may extend beyond actual citizens of Moro Bay. There's actual potential reuse customers, which may be the public, maybe growers, maybe others that we haven't thought of yet. There's the agencies out there that we're going to have to deal with on the permitting side, but also on the political side and, in certain cases, just coordination to make it all happen. And then the fifth part is the industry. Who's actually going to build this? Who are the people who could help build this? How do those players come together in this process? I think what we've heard a lot so far is, well, if we outreach to industry, we'll get the right players to build the right thing. I think what we're going to try to educate everybody on, on that is, well, that's sort of true. There's a best way to make that happen most efficiently and get the right people involved. And a lot of that has to do with coordinating that effort through the Facility's Master Plan. What you do, you have a plan and then you figure out how those components are brought in. And it's not a case of we hire a pipe fitter here and somebody else there and then we have the right thing. That really needs to be coordinated through the design-build process. We'll get to that. And that's part of the education, part of the outreach. And then another part of outreach is coordinating with other city programs that are going on. The obvious one being the update of the General Plan, LCP, which will be coming up. That's a really important part of all this because that's the future of the city. We are designing a facility, that's got to respond to the future of the city. So we need to have a pretty good idea of where that's going to lead to know how big to build this plant. Conversely, we need to guess correctly and not overshoot so we don't lead ourselves into a position of costing too much, A, and growth inducement, B, where you've overdesigned something. So that's going to be a real important thing that we coordinate along the way as that process gets going. And already, we've talked, had a lot of discussions, especially with Scott Graham internally, to figure out where that process is heading, to kind of get a very rough read about where that might go. Because we need to have enough information to be able to design this facility so it's getting into the right ballpark. to be able to design this facility, so it's getting into the right ballpark. I think at the end of the day, that's an iterative process with this one, and I think that's just going to be the reality over the next year or so. The next couple of slides really just, and I don't want to go through these in great detail, but to show where our thinking is going and how these different stakeholders will relate. Obviously, every stakeholder, and by that again, I mean like the council or the public or industry, others, all have different objectives and what they're trying to do and what we want to do relative to each group. Part of it is understanding program, the technical information and so on, and so there's different approaches we're going to be using to get the information out. Here we're listing a few workshops, status reports, draft deliverables and presentations of such, stakeholder interviews, website, there's a lot of different techniques and rather than go into them in great detail right here, suffice to say what we're going to be doing and this, we're going to lay it out for each of these other groups. Right now, we have not developed the formal outreach program in depth, but that's one of our first products, is to be able to give you essentially the cookbook of our whole outreach program. We intend to do that first thing. We intend to present that to you, have it available in September, early to mid-September to be able to have that. The idea there being, you'll understand the answer to a lot of your questions, when are we going to do this, how are we going to do this, who are we going to reach out to, what techniques are we going to use, how do we feedback again once we get initial feedback? So that's going to be a very important, very first step here, but this third column here, I think is important, if you're going to focus on anything up here, these are some of the techniques we'll be using and a lot of them overlap and so on and so forth. But our objectives again, in the second column, you know, go from everything from education, let's not have any surprises, let's identify critical path items, what are the constraints we're up against, when we hit a roadblock, how are we going to deal with it? It all falls under outreach and I think that's going to be an ongoing challenge over the next, for the life of the program, but I think in particular, over the next couple of years, I think is very critical. We talked about industry and what's going to come up next, I do have a slide that'll go into some depth right here or at the end of my discussion, but I do think that this is going to be, I think this has been a piece that's been on the mind of many people. We have an idea of how we think we'll best, that'll be best rolled out, I want to talk about that in a little bit. But here's the upcoming outreach opportunities and we can circle back to some of those, some of those other slides as your questions come up. At the city council level, you know, we're going to be presenting the schedule and the outreach program, I just talked about that. We're going to be having regular WRF CAC meetings and council updates, that'll be an ongoing feature of the entire program. Sometimes we won't have much to say and sometimes we'll have a lot to say and sometimes it'll be a lot more formal, sometimes less, but that's how that will work. Then we have sort of a double-pronged concept here, actually, let me get to that at the end. Stakeholder interviews relative to the facility planning and reclamation issues, those are two different efforts, facility planning and reclamation issues, and this is where Debbie's going to get involved. We have in our program set up formal workshops, formal interviews, again, similar to how we ran things at the beginning of this process, where we're probably going to be talking to a lot of the same people, but then the question was, well, where do we go and in the big picture, does this, how does it make sense from a locational standpoint? No details. Some big picture goals were asked at that time, but now we want to dig deep and on the facility master planning side, we want to understand a little bit, how important, you know, are some of these specific facilities that are referenced in your goals to energy recovery, composting and so forth? How does cost fit into your big picture of concerns and what it does to your rate? I'm guessing it's an important thing, but we want to hear specifically how all that plays out. If you had trade-offs to make, what trade-offs would you make relative to time versus money versus outcome? Those are the kind of questions we want to dive into a little bit and we expect we'll hear a lot, an array of feedback, which we'll want to give to you. On the reclamation issue side of things, you know, you have some of the same kind of questions relative to cost and timing and such. Some of it cannot be fully known because of the regulations aren't out there, for example, on direct potable reuse, but if that were an issue that really was at the end of our analysis, going to pencil out as something as a very cost-effective approach to reclamation and, you know, I would imagine there'd be a lot of support for that, but we're going to be asking a lot of these questions before we know all the answers to those, so it's a little bit difficult there. So again, I can see some feedback that goes into the next year and the next year, once the regulations are modified. What we want to do is, is get the feedback from the public and key stakeholders to make sure we're on the right path for all the, for those two major efforts, facilities master plan and reclamation planning, knowing that those are things that we have to get going very quickly to keep the whole long-range process on schedule. So again, you can see how these things are going to stack up quickly right on top of each other and so the last three bullets kind of get to that. The facility master plan workshops, we have two workshops planned, same on the reclamation planning side. We expect that those are efforts that we're going to be seeing, especially on the facility master plan side, workshops in October, November would be my guess for timeframe there. Reclamation planning might lag a bit behind that, but conceptually, that's the idea there. And then as far as the industry outreach, let me circle back on to the last slide here. On industry outreach, I think the way it's been conceived of, if I'm hearing it out there a little bit, is that we're looking at a workshop where vendors can come and talk about what they do and I think that's one way to do it, but I think we need to take a slightly more sophisticated approach to that in the context of what we're trying to accomplish here in the big picture. Part of that goes back even farther, how does the procurement process work, how does design-build work and how did, how-
Alternative delivery.
Alternative delivery systems is really the question there and how do, how do the, how do industrial players work into all that? So I think one of the first outreach steps really is going to be talking about alternative delivery systems. What's involved in those? When do the physical, you know, how does construction management work? How do the different vendors get hired? What's the way that that happens? And there's a lot of different system, delivery systems we need to talk about there. When you have a feel for that, then the industry outreach will become a little bit clear how that should play out. And I think there, I think what we're talking about here conceptually on this slide, you know, we want to present from the project man, the program management team, the role of industry in all this and the procurement process. I think we envision potentially those who are interested in getting involved, having them register on the city's website, so that when there are, when you do have the delivery system engineer, the consultant who's hired to actually build this thing, how they can interface with the different industrial players out there who might help them, because I think at the end of the day, it's going to be a group that's going to help coordinate all these different players. So when we, we're a little bit jumping the gun to have the industry come in and try to make a sales pitch, we're not quite at that level, but we understand the desire to do something like that. So I think part of that is going to be a bit of an education process for us to you over the next month to get that to happen. So at that, I want to hand it back to Mike to kind of wrap up that question a little bit and then hand it back to you for your questions to us.
Actually, if you could, and Mike, you and I have talked about this, talk about the fourth item there, the project delivery alternatives. It says council work session, that is likely a public seminar-
Right.
And we're currently looking at Saturday, the 17th of October for that and that would be a, just describe how you saw that, Mike.
Sure, so I see, I see that being a presentation where we come in and we present the pros and cons and the constraints and the schedule. If you pursue a design-build process, what they call the best value design build, where you get basically, you basically get bids and you assign some different criteria for awarding a contract, but it's based largely on, cost is one of the main criteria for the whole bid, you get the whole bid upfront. There are other design-build modes where, for example, progressive design build. Progressive design build is you award, you pick consultant or pick a design builder based on several criteria, may not be a complete bid, it might be what percentage of overhead they charge, you might pick some, some other criteria on there. There's construction management at risk. Well, there are all these different terminologies and acronyms out there and what we want to try to do is come present to you, based on the project, timeframe, goals, et cetera, what the pros and cons of each of those might be and provide enough information that council can provide direction and select an alternative. Now that would be a city, a council work session, so the goal there is not get a decision, just to present the information, allow the public to ask questions and become more informed about those processes. Council can weigh that and then come back and we go to council for a, for a meeting, council meeting at a later date for you to make the decision. But the intention there is an open forum to discuss alternative delivery, what the alternatives are, what makes sense for this program and give you the alternatives to make that decision. And then that would be followed up. What my recommendation would be for industry outreach is if we look at alternative delivery, one of the advantages of alternative delivery, whether we're talking design-build or construction management at risk or several of these other tech approaches or techniques, is you can push as much risk, your risk allocation can be really good, really favorable to the city. You can put that risk onto the contractor and what you can do is you can define performance criteria. You can say, we're going to award points based on lifecycle costs, we're going to award points based on innovation, if you wanted to determine how to define that. You could base it on energy recovery, you could base it on any metrics you might want and then allow the market to put teams together and respond to that. And what that does, you allow those vendors and engineers and contractors to put their own teams together, to provide documentation to you through that solicitation process, verifying they can do what they say they're going to do, providing references, showing their financial strength, giving their insurance paperwork, et cetera, kind of like a normal public bid process, but we line all that up in such a way that we allow those folks to work together and put their, put their proposals together, but that we don't dictate too much detail on that process. So I see your objective really with industry outreach, instead of having the best pump salesperson in town come in and convince you that their pump is the way to go, which I don't really think is where you're at right now, what you would, my objectives I see are, these are what I'm recommending, we're open to however you direct us to proceed with this, but I see the objectives for industry outreach really to be promoting fair competition, getting the best value for the city, not necessarily best cost, but best value, meeting your goals and meeting the parameters that are important to you and then reducing risk. And when I weigh those, the outreach technique that I see is really, we do outreach presentations similar to pre-proposal or pre-bid meetings, we present information to folks who register on the website and might be interested, public can attend those, listen in. If those entities have questions, they can send them in in writing or ask at those forums and then we have the website set up so that they can share their contacts and build their teams, but that we say somewhat hands-off in being viewed as preferring a delivery partner or viewing a technology or a vendor a certain way, if that, if that makes sense. So we create a little distance between the city and those proposers and we let the market to respond to, respond to the city's needs.
Can you go forward one slide, please? So the, at the project delivery alternative session, perhaps, or likely on October 17th, there's the potential of different industry representatives to come and attend that?
Anybody would be open to attend that.
And perhaps set up a booth, be able to talk to the community?
Well, I hadn't really envisioned a booth, because here's the issue, if we invite, and I'll just, like, here's my two cents, is if we invite folks to set up a booth or create, then I think we've created an unfair position for, and we've, I think we've created a false perception as to how that process is actually going to work, because I think if you had booths set up with different proposers, I mean, remember, this is a public bid process and so we don't want to do anything that gives any perception that one bidder has an advantage over another one. And if one of them has come in and set up a booth and another one hasn't, I just, I wouldn't see what the advantage would be of that, but anyone's welcome to attend any of these meetings and they're welcome to listen in and, but really, our objective is present to you the alternatives, help the city make the best decision for the program without the noise of the different vendors and sales folks coming in, is the best way I would put that.
And one thing, you know, we've, we've thought about this long and hard and there's, and have gone around and around and around on this. One of the things we have thought about, you know, being consultants ourselves, there are forums out there, public works forums, that are really geared toward industry and that's where the booths get set up and such, and those are real sales kind of forums and to create that environment here in the city, to emulate that, is really setting up a sales sort of environment where whoever has the coolest booth and gives out the best stuff and says the nicest things is going, will they be perceived as the one to work with? Perhaps, perhaps not, but I think on the first goal, promoting fair competition, I think the goal really is to create the environment to allow those industrial vendors to be able to work together to meet the other objectives, getting the best value for the city and reducing the risk for the city. I think if, if somebody bends the ear a little bit better than somebody else to the city and creates a direction that may not be the best idea or may be the best idea, but not for that reason, is our concern. So we haven't quite worked it all the way out, what we feel is our recommendation, but what we're telling you is really our recommendation on how to create the fair environment. We'll follow your lead on what you think is best, but that's our recommendation.
We'll turn it back to, good point for questions at this point, bring it back to council, start it to my right, Noah, do you have any questions you want to start off with?
No questions, I did just want to make a brief comment that I'm glad that we're going to be wrestling with the trade-offs between public input and information and the urgency of the project to keep this moving, so as we look at this in this first phase, that's going to be really interesting and we already had talked a little bit about that in some of the public workshops, yes, people got information about how much effort and resources would be involved with different levels of public involvement, so I think we're working on that and it's going to be an important decision point that will be presented to the community, so that's important. Regarding the workshop and working with industry, I think you've pretty well nailed the objectives in my mind and one, one item that you didn't have there, but we've heard many times in the public, and I think it's inherent in what you've laid out, is the creativity element to make sure that there's an opportunity for a creative idea to come forward, be seen and understood and then evaluated as to whether it works for us or not. And the one component that I think you've already identified that needs to be involved in this, because I agree, creating a sales pitch environment is probably going to be more confusing than anything else, but that there's a good opportunity for the public to hear and listen and start to understand and I'm sure WRF CAC will be involved with that, but also public members that would like to be in the room directly as well, so I think you're on the right track.
John?
I appreciate your comment with regard to the best value really being a function of quality plus cost. I think sometimes we just make the assumption that absolute lowest cost brings us the best product or is the best overall value for the city and the value proposition is a function of those two as opposed to the one and so the more that that's built in, and I don't want to have runaway costs, obviously, I just think that it's extremely important that we reiterate it and reiterate it and reiterate it to the public because I think that understanding needs to be there. That's my first comment. Two, a couple of slides back, I was trying to understand the interaction between the newly-appointed finance committee that the council appointed and then also the finance offshoot of the WRF CAC and I did not see mention of the finance committee appointed by the council on there, I don't know if that's an oversight, but I do think- Uh, I don't know if that's an oversight, but I do think, um, there should obviously be involvement by that group, and so, I would suggest that that be added. And then, um, the, um, interesting comment about progressive design-build issue is, um, makes me chuckle, because, uh, if you've seen one, um, design-build, uh, method, you've seen one. And so, it'll be interesting to go through the process of looking at all the alternatives that you'll be bringing to us, and I say that with all candor. Thank you.
Any more questions to my left? Matt, you want to start off? Christine?
Just a broad question. Can you guys give us a heads-up as how much longer that you, how many more slides are there? Because I wanted to get through those, and then I have some.
I have 104 left.
That's it.
Oh, that's the end?
We've got it.
Okay, great. So, I think we might want to just be aware of that before I.
Yep. So, I think, I think everybody's been covered. If you want to go for your questions, that'd be great.
Okay, great. So, I just want to go back for a second, just so I understand the environmental, what, actually, excuse me, let me be more clear. If we could just go back to property acquisition, when we talked about property acquisition, we talked about environmental. So, when we're talking about the timing for acquisition, would it be after the current fatal flaws environmental analysis comes back, or would it be after CEQA and NEPA come back?
After the CEQA-NEPA document is done.
Okay, so what do you think our timing is on fatal flaws?
Okay, on fatal flaws, I think we're pretty close to knowing those. I know on a biological side, we don't have any real fatal flaw, I mean, we'll present this, but I, we haven't seen any red flags at all from, from an environmental side for what we've done so far. Cultural, we're still working, um, those issues. We have to look along the whole pipeline corridor. We know there's issues along there, but we're not seeing that as a fatal flaw as much as a challenge to have to design with. As far as other issues, we're looking at groundwater percolation and such, and the ability to do that. That's a fugro, um, component, and while there are challenges, that, I wouldn't call them fatal flaws, but they're going to affect the design and how we make things work. But, to ask the basic question, are there things we found about the site that are going to knock it out right now? No. Um, so, I, I think we feel pretty confident we can go forward with the CEQA-NEPA document. Now, that may go into greater depth on some, some of these issues, and in other issues we haven't even talked about, and reveal things we don't know, but we're pretty confident we've, we're touching on the, the ones that could be the most difficult to get through right now.
Okay, great. And then, any sense, I know it's impossible to, to guess, but projects that are complex, perhaps like this one is, the time it takes to go through the CEQA and NEPA process, are we looking at years or months?
Um, well, months can become years, so, that, I think the reality is, um, a CEQA-NEPA document for something this complex, we're probably looking at a year-plus, um, probably less than two years if, if we're working at it. I think one of the challenges is, when can they start? They will not be able to start formally until we have a project description we understand. Project description means site, means process, means a facility master plan that we have enough meat on, that we can start that. The reclamation side, we need to know at least in its bare, um, framework what that's going to involve, involve. There are going to be things that we're going to, this is going to be a challenge for us. We're going to try to work with a consultant to get them going on what they can in analyzing things before the formal process begins, knowing that there's going to be some changes, knowing schedules and issue. So, when I say a year or so, I'm envisioning getting these guys on, under contract soon, and then formally beginning the CEQA-NEPA process in the fall, um, certainly by the end of the year, um, obviously, facility master plan is going to drive that to some extent, but we're looking, they'll be working on it through 2016, would be my guess, you know, and sometime at the end of next year, and into the beginning of 2017 is when we're at that stage. Best guess.
Okay, great. That's very helpful. And then, just a general question. I know that, Mike, your career's been in water, one water, I guess now we're calling it. You used to call it wastewater. So, could you give us an idea, when we're talking about the industry, and what kind of awareness do you firms have about big projects that are happening, either statewide or in the West, or even, you know, all across the U.S.? How, how does your firm look for things to bid on, and how do you find out what's out there so that we know when we're sending our information out, or when we're having our industry day, or when it's time for people to respond, that we're, we're a known project? How does that work?
What's, that's a good question. You know, a, a lot of, um, there are paid services that a lot of, a lot of firms use, my size, all the way up through the, uh, you know, the AE comms and some of the large tens of thousands, that, uh, that you pay and they call and they track down leads. I mean, that's one of, that's one way that the information spreads. The other one is just keeping the website updated. I mean, the thing I'll say about this particular program is it's gone on, you know, long enough and enough different forms that everybody knows it's out there. And so, it's, it's a pretty well, you know, if, when you talk, when I talk to other colleagues or contractors, et cetera, they all know that it's out there. But, I think a key to this is, um, is having a positive way to know that they're tracking it and see what's going on, and that web presence, um, sending e-notific, using your, your e-notification process is actually a really good one. The process that you use now to inform folks about council agendas and that sort of thing, there are a lot of engineers and contractors, et cetera, that use that now, and that's a very effective tool. So, I would say for the types of dollars you're looking at spending on the design, the planning, the construction side, you're, you're going to get plenty of attention just by nature of it. But, we're going to work to try to enhance that.
And I think part of it also is, and this is true of any consultant, the more organized, the more it looks like the agency who's putting out a big project knows what they're doing and how organized they are, the better response you're going to get. Because for any respondent, it's a big deal. They have to put together a team of the right components, the right people. It's not a small undertaking, and they want to know that, um, cities or counties or whoever's doing the projects are serious and knows what they're doing. The more we can present that, uh, the better response you're going to get. They're going to find you, it, it, I mean, I hate to say that, but when there's a big project out there, consultants find it. And, um, that's, that's a reality. But, our job is to, to be able to help you with that, just in the way Mike said.
Just want to add that I probably get two to three calls a month from the lead services asking where, what the status of our project is, you know, when they can advertise for bid, um, you know. They, they want to sell that service to their clients, so they're contacting us pretty much constantly.
Okay, great. So, then, I think I'll just make some wrap-up comments now, and then if there's something else, I'll flail you down. Um, okay, I think that when I, listening, I think this, tonight is sort of a brand-new start for us. It's, well, it's more of the same, but it's another direction. It's a new direction we're finally taking in my, I feel as though we're taking some action steps moving forward with the things that the community's been wanting to talk about, um, for probably the last year, while we've been going through some other processes in order to get to this point. So, what kind of a plant are we going to have, and where, what kind of a reclamation product is it going to produce for the city? So, I think this is a step forward into discussing those things publicly and getting those questions you have out there, getting the answers from our consultants, our staff, and then balancing, do we like those answers? Is that the direction this community wants to go? So, for, for me, I feel like we're getting back to some core issues the community has had. We spent a lot of time talking about where this plant was going to go. We resolved that pretty, hopefully, very clearly, but certainly excellent option for location. So, now it's time to get to those next two very important questions. What kind of a plant will we build? What kind of technology? We, we're, what's, the terms I think we hear in the community say, what kind of technology? And then, what will we do with the water, the new one water that comes out? So, I look forward to, this is a kickoff, really, involving the public again. I'll be curious to hear public comment after, uh, we close up our remarks. That's one thing. And the second thing I think that we, I considered and, and wanted to just mention to all of us, is that the water world has really changed since 2013. When this project was restarted after the coastal commission denial, that we weren't in the throes of the drought that we're in today. We didn't have the governor, we didn't have the governor passing bills, we didn't have emergency drought, um, restrictions happening, we didn't have direct potable reuse possibilities, sitting here, you know, waiting for the next available, waiting for the next, um, release of what we're able to do. So, I think it's amazing to me that in just really a year and a half or so, it's really changed the, the way we look at our water and what we're allowed to do with our water, um, in our own communities. So, I think that to take the time we need to figure out that reclamation piece, we weren't in this position in 2013 or 2014. It's a whole new landscape for us. So, I think to be smart, we're building a plant that's going to outlast my lifespan, I hope. Um, I just had a birthday, so I'm a little more aware of what my lifespan may or may not be. But, uh, aside from that, the, the truth is, we are building a plant. The plant we have now, um, you know, is, is six, almost six decades old. So, I think that it's important to think about that, and maybe it seems, you know, a month or two, or six months in one direction, um, to get some more information, I think may be well worth it in the lifespan of the plant, and to secure the water for our community for the future. Because we certainly are in a very insecure position right now with our water, and I think our goal is water security. So, I also would encourage those of you who are here to tell lots of folks to watch the presentation in the replay, if they haven't yet seen it. I think it's very useful to hear clearly the direction that our team is, is leading us, and then to respond to that every time we have a chance, like, tonight you'll have a chance to respond in public comment, but people can come to any council meeting and talk about it. They can come to the WRF meetings and talk about it. So, I think, please encourage people to watch this presentation, go to the website, review it, and then follow up with questions. So, I thank you all very much for your presentation. I think it's great. I have a great deal of confidence in the direction we're going. Thanks.
Thanks, Christine. Matt?
Mike, I have a question. In terms of the public outreach, all the information tonight will be on city's website?
I will provide that to Dana.
And so, we're going to put like a little, we'll put a little hot button on the website?
It'll be on the hot, on the hot topics on the website.
Okay, and then, um, likewise, will there, um, will be any chance for members of the public to send commentary? Like, like email commentary, or like a hot button where they see that on the website saying, "I have a question about this"?
Yeah, well, we're just trying to, trying to think exactly how we'll do that, but that'll be, that will, how to do that will be on the, um, when you click the link on the hot topics, um, that says, "WRF update," how to do that will be there.
And the reason I say that is, our next meeting will be October 17th. Is that where we're talking, or this next, um?
Well, no, what I would say is, you'll, we'll have another meeting in September, where we're going to come.
The reason I say that, because we're going to have a lot of folks who want, are looking at this, they're going to digest it, and then if they want to send commentary via the web, or get ready for the next meeting to generate their questions, so they're not just showing up, um, and just going off the top of their head. So, you will have a chance, folks, um, to generate those questions from the information. Um, other than that, um, that's all I had to add, my questions.
I'll say, the council likely by, um, likely before the 17th of October will be, uh, seeing a recommended environmental contract, consultant contract, um, that will have gone through the WRFCAC. So, you, you'll, you'll be seeing at council meetings, WRF things as we go along, the one, the, for example, the environmental consultant contract.
And I think another thing you'll see is the overall plan for outreach and a workshop schedule and other things.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just thinking, being proactive and letting, so there's no surprises that people can know what's coming. And that's all my questions, and thank you for presenting.
John?
Thanks to all of you for the presentation overview. I think, um, it would, it'd be handy to have this, I think, on the website also. I'm sure you're going to do that and have copies for us, or we can download copies, which would be helpful. The other thing I was thinking, um, this type of process, um, I think the public should know really allows for greater input than the standard process of select a quote-unquote "all-encompassing" company to build your plant, and basically, it happens according to the model that they have. I call it the McDonald's model, uh, versus the moral bay model. And, um, I think that's very positive, and Christine alluded to that, and I just wanted to reaffirm that along the way, there is opportunity to comment on some very significant components of this project, and, uh, public out there, please take advantage of that. That's the first thing. The second, um, I, I do believe, as we become familiar with these agencies, that there is connectivity that we all have, at least at the council level and maybe even in the community, to the elected officials, which I didn't hear talked about, and to leverage the electeds to be involved in helping pursue us reach an endpoint, um, whether it's a financial endpoint, uh, with regard to grants or whatever, is extremely important. Um, and the mayor talked about the coastal commission, and I, I'm thinking about commissioners versus staff. I think we've done a wonderful job of keeping staff updated, but outreach to commissioners by the hierarchy here, I do believe is extremely important and should begin as soon as possible with, with really good information that we're getting here tonight. So, I wanted to thank you all for, um, your presentation. I'm excited about where we're headed, um, and am looking forward to, uh, being involved with the process, and so, thank you.
Great. John, Noah?
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, great. Just wanted to, uh, a couple more questions, and then conclude with some remarks as well. Um, it goes back to the outreach for industry. You, we had a lot, a lot of good discussion on that, and, um, was, as I was taking notes through that, uh, so, and some of the comments is about shifting the risk to the industry through that process, and, and we were talking about outreach as far as outreach to our community as we go through the process. I just wanted to revisit that, so I've captured and understand that, and maybe it provokes some, some thought or understanding with our, um, uh, community as well. So, the, the outreach to industry, uh, to understand what our market is out there, as an example, um, all the different projects that are going on in the state, in the nation, those industries that are pretty much involved in, in, uh, projects, no different, if you're just talking about our building industry and you just want to build a house, you know, how, how busy is the market? So, do we have a sense with, um, the market and the availability? Is it going to be, are we going to be pressed? Are we going to be well-timed as far as, um, uh, the availability of industry constructors to be able to fit into our time schedule through this? Maybe you can respond to that?
The, what I'll say is, at this point, it's difficult to tell where we are a year or 18 months out. I would not, I wouldn't, I wouldn't feel comfortable projecting that right now. I mean, we have seen the industry getting bigger, um, and I think there are strategies that we have to employ to make sure the documents are fair, create the best climate we can for that competition. There are things that we can do in terms of that outreach to let contractors know when it's coming, and to try to get on their, uh, you know, stay in their, stay in their, uh, in, in focus with them. So, uh, you know, we know, we see contractors getting busier, we do see, we do see bid prices going up generally, so that is a trend that we're seeing, that we're seeing statewide. So, I would say that it is a, it is an issue, but there are ways that we mitigate that when the time comes.
And I think one way to mitigate that, um, is a classic thing that can happen at, in any economy. If it looks like there's some contractor who's getting favored or getting more time, other potential bidders will note that and say, "We're not going to go for it." And you just won't get the competition. We really need to try very hard to keep this as a fair and open, um, field, and it's a big project. It's, it's an attractive project to a lot of people. We've heard a lot from a lot of different folks out there, and we want to keep it that way. We'll get the best bids that way, for sure.
And I, I guess the one comment you made as far as, um, making it, continuing to make an attractive package, is it's got to be a clear package. So, if people are bidding on that, uh, the best work that you do up front will make, um, those interested contractors see it, "We've got a clear package that we're interested in," versus something that, you know, "We just don't know where we're getting ourselves into," and they might not be inclined to be, to be looking or bidding towards that. So, that's what I got out of the conversation there. And, um, let me just go back through some of my comments. We talked in, in the opening, we, um, Mike, you were talking about, we got started here through direction of, um, council goals, and just want to reinforce that our, the council goals really started through our community outreach and community, um, from that level as well, and I think that's going to be continued through this outreach process as well. Um, the other comment about, um, water, I think Christine made a comment about water one, but really, the future is water management. It doesn't, it doesn't matter, um, whether or not it's a, a treatment, or a delivery, or supply, it really is all about water, water, um, management in the future. And, uh, And, and I did have one other, it was interesting comment, John, on having our finance group involved in this, considering I thought our WRF PAC really had a subcommittee in finance as well, so wasn't really sure that we were being redundant on that or if we wanted to just have any more discussion from a council level on drawing in our finance committee into this equation or just continue to work with our finance subcommittee on the WRF PAC. And I just, not sure if I understood that, but it was like, we're adding a component of our finance committee into evaluating this and thought we had a pretty good working group through our subcommittee. I don't know if anybody else has any discussion points on drawing our finance committee as we go through this process. Maybe you might want to comment on that, John. Kind of get?
It was more of a question than a mandate, and the question was, I know that we have a finance subcommittee of, of WRF PAC, and the thought was, you have a contingent, although new, of council-appointed quote-unquote "finance committee" overall that fits into and reviews a number of projects. To me, this is one of the biggest, if not the biggest, project we're going to have over the next five to 10 years. Thusly, would it not behoove us to have those eyes upon this project as well, possibly in conjunction with that team? And I would leave it up to the WRF PAC people to maybe even respond to that and add to that comment, so.
Just want to point out that the new chair of the citizens' finance committee is the, also on the WRF PAC finance committee.
Yeah. Christine, did you have any more comments? All right, good. Okay, and then I think, just to respond to a couple other comments, you know, as we go through the future of this, it's, we're looking at beyond our lifetime. I think it's, the other part of this was having a facility that has the capability to expand. So it's not just, does it, does it get us there for 50 years? Does it get beyond that and have those expansion capabilities? So I think that was one, one comment that was discussed early on. And then some other comments about, as we're entering into this part of things, is it, to what level do the electeds participate? And I speak to that because part of a, you know, we will do an annual visit to Washington, DC for harbor dredging, and at some point, do we start expanding that trip to where we're looking at focusing not only on the time spent there for dredging funding, but advocating for this project as well? And I would expect that as we get through this process, council will have more discussion on that, whether or not at state level and/or something in Washington, DC. But just want to make my comments on that. And with that, just wanted to, you know, thank everybody for the presentation, and unless there's other council remarks, we can open it back up to public comment, just to get some closing remarks and comments from this presentation. Are there any other comments from council? Saying none? It'll be a great time to open it up for public comment, so if anybody had some closing remarks based on the presentation, public comment, we'll just open it back up. Please come forward.
Pull?
Okay, great. Okay. First of all, I think it was a great presentation. I have a comment and I have a question. So actually, I have a couple comments. The first one relates to a comment that was made by one of my colleagues, and she had suggested putting a docket in the library. So for those people that don't have access to computers, you know, at least they'll have a hard copy. I think that that was a great idea, so I would echo that. But I'm glad to see that phase, the phase one includes a master reclamation plan, and I'm also assuming that you're closely watching the development of the state's potable reuse regulations. And with that in mind, I'm just wondering, what is the timeframe there? In other words, is it, I guess what I'm looking at is, if they were to decide to fast-track it, would, could we also kind of fast-track our phase one and phase two, because since you've got the master plan in there? So maybe it might give us some hope that we're not waiting for the regulations to come out, but in fact, we're involved with the development of the regulations so that, and we're aware of what's going on with the regulations, so that maybe we could shave off a year or two. Comments?
Can I respond? Can I? You want to just continue with your comments?
That's it. That's really, that was my question, is if it's fast-tracked, I would hope that we could fast-track phase one into phase two so that it doesn't drag out to seven or eight years.
Great. Jenny, thank you.
Thanks again.
Thanks. So in, that was one of the things I tried to articulate, and the differentiation between phase one and phase two and why it may actually make sense to wait a little bit if we don't have the regulations. The state has talked about having regulations in four years, which is a long time, obviously. That said, we have already asked, for example, the Water Quality Control Board, hey, how about make Morro Bay a pilot project? As you're rolling out regulations, let us, let us try them out. Let's be the first, let's be the first plant. So we're still working through that. We're still talking to the water board, and we'll talk to the state about those things, but the, the, I guess the answers to the question are, A, yes, we're keeping a very close eye on the development of those. B, right now, the state's timeline to have final regulations is four years, which, which doesn't help us move phase two early. It pushes phase two a little later. But C, maybe there is an awesome opportunity to, to, for us to be a pilot and to work closely, collaboratively with the state as they roll those regulations out.
Great. And if I could add one comment, too, the facility master plan has optional tasks to look at direct potable reuse as one of the, as one of, and as one of the reuse alternatives for the plant, and then also to look at what other system requirements might be required, say, at the city's D-SAL plant, for example, to incorporate direct potable reuse. So we've got tasks within that master plan. When we get into this process and we see a few months in how those are coming together, then we may pull the trigger on some of that work to go ahead and do it. So we're trying to get ahead of that. And what we've, what I've heard anecdotally is that the state is looking for a potable reuse opportunity. So we are tracking that closely. Yep, thank you.
Any other public comment?
Good evening. Thank you all. Yes, it was a very good presentation. Thank you. My name is Linda Merrill, and I just was, had a couple of questions. One of them is, when does the pizza get here? I know, and beer. You know, Christine, thank you for bringing up that we are in a catastrophic drought. And I think that if some brilliant 30-year-old came up with an idea of how to intercept all the water that we're exiting into the ocean, that would be really terrific. I mean, something, not that that gets in the way of what you're doing, but it's happened. I mean, you know, there's new technology and new ideas, but we're still exiting millions of gallons into the ocean every day. So if that should come up, you know, that would be brilliant. Do you have an email address so that I could send you some questions as well?
Sure. Well, what I would say is, it sounds like I'm, I'm looking to city folks, but it sounds like you can set up a link on the website so folks could submit questions, and then we could respond.
Absolutely. You have mine already.
I do.
So for tonight, send them to me and I'll send them straight to Mike.
Oh, great. Okay, thanks.
And then again, as you hit the, the, the link that we'll put on the hot topics on the website, one of the first things there will be communicating on the project, and we'll, we'll figure out a good, a great way to, to do communication on this.
Great, thank you.
When we get the permanent, the website set up specifically for the project, we'll have those capabilities.
All right.
That's one thing that didn't come out in this, we should probably highlight for everybody, is that one of Mike's jobs is to, is to create a whole separate website just for this product, project. And that will eventually be the repository of information. We'll also, got your comment, have hard copy information at appropriate places. But so that, that project website will be both for interaction between the city and the community with regard to this project and interaction between the project and industry. And so when you heard Mike talk about, you know, industry would, would, could sign up to get updates and that sort of thing, but since he's only been on the job for six days, they don't have the website set up yet, but that's one of the, one of the key tasks that they're working on.
Great. Thank you so much, everyone.
Thank you, Linda. Anybody else for a public comment?
Hi, Marla Jo Putan-Sedowski, and thank you for the presentation. I still am going to have some, one, one first question. Let me see. Let's see, I think all three of you are, three of, three people over there. When we were asked, when you were asked about what level of treatment your, your build-out, your predicted build-out at five years, what level of treatment? I heard someone say it would be the level of treatment that we now have at the plant. Is that what you're saying?
Council direction has been design a tertiary treatment plant with disinfection.
Right.
So we see that as the phase one, the definition of the phase one treatment level.
So within five years?
Yes, ma'am.
Good. Okay, thank you. Because, because we're less than.
That was my fault. I was not clear on that.
We're less than secondary treated, so tertiary is a big, that helps me a lot. Thank you. Thanks. Then also with the, I want to know what, you mentioned you were having a build team, build team bi-weekly meetings? What is that?
That's my meeting to ensure that I'm meeting regularly with my department that is building this project for the city.
Okay, it's not, okay.
Just like I meet with Public Works on a regular basis and the fire chief on a regular basis.
Okay, thank you.
I meet with him on a regular basis.
I didn't know if we hired build team. Okay, thank you. And then third, with the pilot program, I think that I can safely say, with my experience with Sacramento, that Natural Resources Department, Ocean Protection Council, State Lands, all know about Morro Bay, and they know that we need this plant. We know that, they know that we're one of the, the last ones that aren't even meeting the, the minimum treatment. And they also know that we are doing what they call, we, we might not see it that way, but what Sacramento calls a voluntary retreat off the beach for sea level rise, which puts us in the pound seats here for Prop 1 funding. And Prop 1 funding, like Mike said, they are, there, there's funding for the purple pipe, for the redelivery of the water, but there's also something in there for recharge of aquifers. It's already in the Prop 1 funding, that it's a category. So if we take into consideration that the city of Morro Bay, our Morro Basin drinking water aquifers are cross-contaminated with nitrates, to the point that that water, it can't be just pumped out of our wells and used anymore. It's that severe. It has to be treated through the D-SAL, which I'm not sure if we have the correct technology there anyway, but then it has to be blended again. So Morro Bay has a disastrously decomposed drinking water aquifer, and that should be a number one, is what I've tried to talk to the city here, of owning our problem. Owning our problem of our polluted drinking water aquifer. When we do that, you go to the Department of Public Health, which has been taken under the wing of the state water board now, which means they have more funding for enforcement, more funding for helping communities like ours. They're completely very much different than the Regional Water Quality Board, their goals. Regional Water Quality Board is not in charge of our drinking water. The Department of Public Health is, and they are in a much better place to be of help to us right now. So I would, I would encourage a full disclosure of the condition of our drinking water aquifer when we go to these, when we go to this agency. And also, well, I could, what was I going to say? Anybody read my mind or something here?
You're always welcome to submit any of your comments via email, and we're, be glad to, you know, I think everybody would be glad to respond.
Yeah, but.
If they, if it comes to you.
Okay.
Or when it comes to you, I should say.
Yeah, whatever. All right, thanks.
All right, Marla, thank you. Anybody else for public comment?
Good evening. Bill Martin. Just a couple of quick ones, and that is, do I understand in phase one that the water will still be discharged into the ocean? I'm not sure if it's going to be up to a standard that it can be used for agriculture or not. That was the one question, because I know that was the original intent, to have the plant up and running, at least bring it up to ag standards. The second thing is, I think the site is, to me, is very critical, and if I understand right, it will be two years before you can actually purchase the site. And in the meantime, is there any way of actually getting a firm commitment, you know, an option or something of that nature? Because if you're two years out, change of mind, and, you know, you've put all this effort into one site, and I know you have a letter of understanding, but is there anything binding that the city can lock up the property prior to two years until the final documents are there? And the last comment is, is the city able to actually condemn property outside the city limits? I'm not sure. Maybe you can, but I wasn't sure if you could. Thank you.
Great. Anybody else for public comment?
Yes, but will you be answering his questions first?
Sure. We're, I was going to have, we can answer them now or we can answer them when everything's done.
Because Marla Jo's kind of got answered after she asked hers, and my, I'll just go ahead then and say mine, my Betty Winholz, and mine kind of bounces off of Bill's and Marla Jo's. Because when you say that you've been told that the first phase is going to be tertiary-ready, you know, there's many definitions of tertiary, and is it, is it going to be tertiary-ready or is it actually going to be tertiary? And if so, at what level? So I would like a little more clarification on that. I do appreciate Mr. Heding's comment about finance, because even though WRF PAC may have a subcommittee on finance, the broader committee of finance, and even though the chair may be redundant, who knows how long that would be if something should suddenly happen? But it seems to me, this project does fit into the overall, as part of the overall picture, and to look at it financially separate from the larger budget, I think is a mistake. So I appreciate that comment, that it should be somehow glued into that bigger committee. And my final comment may not be appropriate, because I missed the first part of your presentation, but I'm responding off of what was said at the city council meeting the other night, and that was that you were going to do the design, build, finance, whatever combination of choices, that that was going to happen in September and technology wouldn't happen until October. And to me, that's backwards, because how can you decide what to do to finance and build like that if you don't know what technology you're doing? It's like you haven't defined the project. It seems to me, you can't define the project until you know your technology. So to me, that's the ultimate question. It's the one that comes first and that should be happening now.
Anybody else for public comment?
Thank you, Barbara Spagnola. Thank you for the presentation and the questions. And yes, as a member of the. Thank you for the presentation and the questions, and yes, as a member of the newly-created Citizens Finance Group, who just had our first meeting literally an hour before this, we welcome your solicitation of our input, our comments, our recommendations, and we'll be happy to provide that. And it appears that we have a good committee with people with that expertise that can hopefully help in that vein. So thank you, Mr. Heding, and thank you, council.
Thanks, Barbara. Anybody else for a public comment? Can we, did you capture all those questions? You want to, you want to lead off on those, or do you need?
I can, or do you want to? Well, I'll start on the, on the property piece again, and then turn it over to you, Mike, for the, the treatment questions. So, yeah, just to be very clear, the city cannot enter into an agreement for the purchase of property before the environmental documents are complete. We cannot do it. It would, it would be an indication of a decision to build at a certain site, which could then likely be challenged, and the whole sequel process could be challenged, because it would indicate that we really didn't care what the environmental stuff said, we'd already made a decision, we were going to already do, we were going to do whatever we wanted to do. So we can, we can form the, a good, strong memorandum of understanding, but we can't enter, enter into any sort of firm or binding agreement. But, the good news, I guess, is the answer to the second question is, yes, the city can condemn property outside the current incorporated city boundaries, and, and as we said, that's a process we don't want to go anywhere near. We're hopeful we don't have to go near it. We don't think we're going to need to go near it. It's a legitimate question to ask and wonder about, but, but there is, but if it came to that, then it would take some time, but yes, we, the city has the authority to do that.
Okay. And I think we had one more question about still discharge to the ocean with Phase One.
Yeah, and so, so let me, let me walk through that. So, first, the discharge to the ocean, you know, the objective is, use that water for its highest and best use as early as possible. Now, if ag reuse is the preferred method, and if groundwater recharge, for some reason, is, is just not viable, or the community elects not to go that route, and I want to point out, our goal is to provide as many alternatives to council and community as we can, on delivery methods, treatment process, et cetera. So this is not a, this is not one of those projects where a bunch of engineers go back and work in cubicles, and come back to you and say, this is your design, this is what you're stuck with. So I want to make that clear. We're going to have many workshops over the next year, talking about this. But, if we find that ag direct reuse is the preferred alternative, then we may not be able to, the community, you know, is going to have to look at what the cost of storage might be during wet weather, and the cost of storage during wet weather might need to be weighed against the cost for ocean discharge. That might be one of the decisions that comes up. So, and, and then the initial startup of the plant may require some initial discharge to the ocean. It might, but you'll make those decisions, as, as a community and as a council. So I just want to say what, what's out there. Regarding the treatment process and treatment technologies, I, it's of my opinion that really the driver is the schedule on the delivery process, and the ranges of technologies that are out there are, are going to come out of the treatment goals, and they're going to come out of the schedule. And I'm confident that we can select a delivery approach that meets the ranges of water quality that the facility master plan team is looking at. And two, regarding the level of quality, the minimum level of quality that they're currently looking at is tertiary treatment with disinfection. All the alternatives they're looking at are a step above that, either including salt removal, for example, with RO on the back end, or similar types of polishing steps on the back end. So I can assure you that, that, that council direction has been clear to us from the start. Sorry. The Game of Thrones theme, actually, is pretty, it's pretty nice. So let's see, what else? I think that, I think that covered the technical questions, but I want to assure you that decisions aren't going to be made in back rooms. Alternatives are going to be brought forth to the public to review and comment on, and we're going to make, our goal is to make this as transparent a process as possible.
So, just looking at questions, was there a question on alternative sites as well out there? Bill, were you, were you alluding to alternative site on that? Are you, you're okay on your questions? Okay, okay, good, thanks. And we got the tertiary, the finance versus technology, did we address that? Was that question answered? Okay. And then, I think we got everything. Was every, were there any other public comment or questions, comments then?
I'll just say, having attended the first Citizens Finance Committee meeting right before this, one of the points that, that was discussed, a question from a finance committee member was, are we really just looking at the general fund, or are we looking at other, at everything? And I said, please, 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 this committee needs to look at everything, the general fund, and the enterprise funds, and the special fund, from Measure Q to the harbor fund, and especially water and sewer funds. So, so, and we can work through this, we'll work with both of the committees. My sense is, is that the WRFCAC finance subcommittee would be focused on the finance, finances of the, of the construction of the water reclamation facility itself, and the general Citizens Finance Committee would be looking more at the overall project, how it affects the water fund, the sewer fund, then the water fund, and the, and those two funds in, in total, sort of the issues of rates and those things, but the WRFCAC finance subcommittee would be looking hard at the actual cost of construction of the water reclamation facility. But we can work with both of those committees on that, and then bring that to the council for your, for your input.
Great. Unless there's any other closing remarks, you want, any closing remarks? Am I right?
Yeah, if I could just, yeah, and thank you, David, for that, I appreciate that. And I think, from the finance committee's standpoint, one of the things that would be important would be operating efficiencies of the plant. It's, it, also, in terms of looking at that, it's not only just building it, but it's going to cost afterwards, I see our operator down there, it's going to cost afterwards, and I just want to make sure we catch the point of operating efficiencies and building into it as much as possible, cost efficiencies that lead to operating efficiencies, which will translate into cost savings for many years in the future. So, thanks.
Okay. Well, thanks very much for the presentation. Mike, welcome. John, welcome. Just wanted to recognize Rick and Bruce, you guys show up to this, and that just shows your level of enthusiasm, so thanks very much. And, you know, we've got a long ways to go. This was a great start kickoff on a study session for this, and there's a lot of things that are built into this, as far as the workshops and where we go from here, so looking forward to that, and just welcome everybody's participation as we move forward. So, great job, everyone, and we'll adjourn the meeting. Thanks.